Good evening. Welcome to our December meeting. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please join me in our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Remain standing for me, please. I want to invite Cliff Sparks from BCOC up, and he's gonna lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Lord God, we're thankful people, and we're grateful for all the blessings of liberty and peace and goodness that you bestowed on us and upon this school district. Lord, thank you for the wisdom and the calling you've given to each one that's working here with all these children and for all these families. We thank you for this. Lord, we ask you to comfort the family of Brianna Platt, that she would know, that they would know, your peace that passes all understanding, and they wouldn't feel left out or embittered by their loss, but they would feel your love and know your presence. And for all the rest of us, for whom this is a season of joy, I ask that your love be manifest in every household, of all students, faculty, staff, everyone that's connected with the school district, and that we'd know your righteousness, peace, and joy. That is Emmanuel, God with us, in the name of Jesus Christ, for whom this is the season, in his name we pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Sparks. I'd like to call up Lilith Hannan. She's a sixth grader at Bastrop Intermediate. She's gonna speak on to us for the character trait of perseverance. Lilith is involved in after-school choir at BIS, enjoys reading, singing, drawing, sewing, crocheting, and any kind of crafty activity. Lilith's grandparents are here, Deborah and Ephraim Canava. Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lilith, and I'm here with you today about my perseverance essay. Perseverance to me is a unique trait that is made of several characteristics. A person who has perseverance is strategic, creative, optimistic, resilient, and determined. When you are faced with a challenge, you must be strategic with how you deal with it. Not everything is to be decided on hastily. Sometimes you must sit back and think through your choices. It may delay what you're working towards, but you will prevail in the end. You must also be creative with your response to a problem. Think out of the box and consider your choices, then decide on what is best for you and the ones around you. Optimism is necessary to persevere. You have to hope for the best and plan for the worst. Thinking positive and having a positive attitude is the key to persevering because it is reassuring to those around you and to yourself. Resilience is perhaps the most important trait of all to persevere. If you are unable to regain your balance and take on a problem, you will not persevere. Unfortunately, you will not have success in everything you do the first time you try it. So that being said, expect to fail, but also let that motivate you to be ready to bounce back and try your best. Last, you must be determined. If you have no drive behind your goal, how do you expect yourself to persevere? You must imagine your goal, you must want it, and you have to envision it. All of these characteristics are key to persevering in anything you try. Perseverance is something that you must never give up on. For example, Martin Luther King was a civil rights activist, and he fought for what he believed in. In the end, it led to his assassination. He did not live to see his dream come true, but he still persevered through his task, and after his death racial discrimination was abolished in public settings. This is, this was a noble act of noble perseverance. Perseverance cannot be without strategy, creative creativity, optimism, resilience, and determination, or we would have failed miserably. Perseverance is more than just never giving up. It is a trait that us as humans can choose to possess and apply in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Lilith, that was great. Made BIS proud tonight. We appreciate it. Special presentations. Steve?
Yes. Our first presentation is from Chartwell's. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ames to come forward and help us out.
Mr. Murray, while Mr. Ames is getting ready, he's got a couple of checks he wants to present to you and the board tonight. This is in keeping with Chartwell's financial commitment to our district. I don't know which check is first. Clifton, if you'll show one or the other there. So the $20,000 check is representative of the commitment to our culinary arts program. This is for material and supplies that are used in helping our students in arcade programs. Les is here tonight as well, and he can always answer questions as to how that partnership's going, but I think that the kids are benefiting greatly, and it's great to have that kind of infusion of money. And the $10,000 commitment is for advertising that we're able to use in our fund district-wide to support all students. And then Mr. Clifton Ames to the left is our food service director, and Ms. Sulaada is our, one of our field supervisors.
And we have a, we're gonna get a treat tonight. You know, each time we have our December meeting, it's not very long, but we like to involve the students, and we try to get the students involved each month, and this month's no different. We have a special presentation by Cedar Creek Middle School Theater Arts Students. Mr. Hallamack?
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you, board members. For the fourth consecutive year, Cedar Creek Middle School Fine Arts Department is going to share some of the amazing talents of our students with the Bastrop community. And let me ask our theater arts teacher, and really one of the driving forces behind this activity, Ms. Janie Delion, to share more about our upcoming musical. Ms. Delion?
Hi, it is, I'm happy to be here this evening to announce our fourth annual Fine Arts Collaborative Musical. Over 200 CCMS students auditioned for performance roles this year. So it is, it's definitely a growing, a growing activity. It gets bigger and bigger every year. Another hundred-plus students signed up to work and auditioned to work in pre-production and backstage capacity. So it was a fantastic turnout when we came to the audition for, for the musical this year. This year is, once again, art band, choir, dance, and theater programs collaborate. We proudly present Guys and Dolls Jr. 7:00 PM, January the 9th, 10th, and 11th at the Jerry Fay Wilhelm Center for the Performing Arts. Here with me this evening are Kayden Casey and Mark Garcia. They're playing Benny South Street, Nicely Nicely Johnson, respectively. This year I had a little bit of a challenge selecting a scene or a song to bring to you because so many of the numbers involve extensive choreography, or more choreography than will fit in this space. So, so these guys, as they sing through Guys and Dolls, they're gonna be singing Guys and Dolls for you this evening. There may be an interlude in the middle. Just imagine a bunch more guys back there dancing with them. They'll be presenting Guys and Dolls tonight. Give me just a second, let me get the music set up and get these guys set up, and they'll sing for you. Again, please accept this invitation to come join us, January 9th, 10th through 11th, 7:00, 7:00 PM at the Jerry Fay Wilhelm Center for the Performing Arts. Tickets are on sale, just as a general, general announcement, tickets are on sale at www.tickettracker.com. Thank you guys very much for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Ms. Delion. We'll move to superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of quick statements I'd like to make, if you bear with me. You wanna address or acknowledge a few matters publicly here tonight. There's been some, a lot of social media implosion chatter, et cetera, that may need to be addressed, or clarified, or corrected. First of all, before we get to that, I think it's important to go a little further into the statement on Brianna's part. You know, Pastor Sparks referenced Brianna, and we wanna express our heartfelt sympathy to the family of Brianna Platt. Brianna passed away recently after a long battle with leukemia. Brianna was a 17-year-old senior at Cedar Creek High School and a proud member of their award-winning choir. This, in fact, the Cedar Creek High School Christmas Choir Concert being held tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Performing Arts Center is being dedicated in her honor and memory. There's a public memorial planned for 2:30 this Friday at the Hyatt Lost Pines Resort to celebrate Brianna's life, and all the public is welcome. We just wanna say our thoughts and prayers go out to Brianna's parents, her brothers, her sister, and her extended family. Thank you. Reference a couple of things we wanted to go over real quick. Regarding the male student that was involved in altercation with police officers at Cedar Creek High School on November 20th, and as a result was hospitalized, we wish to express our concern and desire to be communicated with regarding his medical condition or status. The administration from CHS was in contact with family members for two days following the incident, but have since been prohibited by attorneys from communication of any kind with his family members. We hope that the student is recovering and doing well. We would wish to be informed regarding his actual medical condition and/or status, if at all possible. All inquiries made to the district regarding this incident on November 20th are being handled through our attorneys, as there is full investigation and possible litigation pending. We are cooperating with law enforcement officials and the district attorney's office as this incident is being thoroughly investigated. Also, late on Wednesday, December 11th of this past week, we were informed by law enforcement officials that a female student had been allegedly abducted from Bastrop High School parking lot and was found by police later that evening and subsequently returned to her mother. The following day, we put out phone and email blasts, Twitter posts, and a letter home to all BISD parents, giving some clarifying information regarding the alleged incident. We are cooperating with law enforcement officials as they fully investigate this alleged assault. We are also reviewing any and all security protocols and procedures, including video surveillance as part of the investigation and our after-action review. Contrary to some communication, the video cameras at BHS were operable and functioning on that day. We wanna communicate with, with parents and public regarding matters such as these in a timely manner, but we also want to have valid and accurate information to share as we do so. Please understand that safety and security of our students and staff is vitally important to us, as we know it is to our students and their parents and to our district staff. And last, we'd like to say, we wish everyone a Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year as we finish the fall semester this coming Friday. It's been a great fall semester, a lot of accomplishments, and a lot of great work by so many of our folks, our teachers, our students, all of our staff members, support staff, everybody. In fact, in the communication, the communicator for this month, if you get a chance to read it, we've got a special piece in there thanking our teachers for their wonderful work that they do. We hope you enjoy your time away with family and friends, and that you are safe while at home or while traveling. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We are to our curriculum report.
At this time, I want to have the opportunity to share with the board an overview of what an early college high school would look like and the guidelines for that. The information I'm gonna share with you tonight is not as detailed as the information that I've already previously provided in your packet, so if you have any questions, we'll provide an opportunity at the end to do so. So what is an early college high school, and how does it look in Texas? These are just some items that were included in the information that was shared with you last week, and we're gonna just go over a few of those. Basically, an early college high school, out of this page, the emphasis I wanna share is that it does provide the students that are included in that program up to 60 college hours at no cost to the students. It targets your traditionally underserved students who may not otherwise attend college, including the list in front of you. What are the impacts and the outcomes? Just some things that I wanted to highlight from the state evaluation that was shared in your packet previously, is that it does save students, possibly up to 4,000 a student, for a total of 4.5 million inclusive with all students. And at the bottom, there's some good information from 2009 and 10 that the first cohort in the Texas Early College graduated 900 students, and 308 of those students earned an associate's degree, which means they had 60 college hours in addition to their high school diploma at the same time. The benefits for the college high school, the emphasis I'd like to share off of this page is that it helps close the gaps, and that's really important, especially in Bastrop. That's been a goal of ours since I know that I have arrived and before that. Some benefits for students and families are they definitely increase high school degree acquisition. It removes the barriers that sometime exist to college entry by providing students with college knowledge. Students and families save money on tuition costs. It increases college persistence by supporting students past the 20 credits threshold, and it provides opportunities for students to earn higher wages. Here I just provided the opportunity to look at what a dual credit looks like side-by-side to an early college high school. We currently have dual credit in our district at this time for the students at both CCHS and BHS. And on the right, an early college high school would target at-risk kids. It would definitely provide 60 credit hours for all students in a planned program of study. And the last is that it would be at no cost for the students that attended. A traditional early college high school is part of a taxing entity of a university that they work with, and so that's how it traditionally is. But if Bastrop were to be accepted from TEA, that's the next step, we've applied, and TEA was to accept us, it would be a little bit different for Bastrop because we are not a taxing entity. That's not the plan to go there, and that we have an, ACC has an early college designated campus, and we would have that at the West Campus, but our students, when they became juniors, would go to Elgin at that campus to obtain their dual credits, not stay within the district. Here's some guidelines for a TEA-established early college high school. It just talks about the commitment of a principal and the Institute of Higher Education. The liaison would be ACC. It talks about a counselor within four years being at 100%, and that you definitely have highly qualified early college high school teachers within the four years full-time. We might look at it a little bit differently here at Bastrop. If we were to move in that direction, we would take the experience that we have from Quad C and some systems that we've already put in place for two years. We would definitely have a principal, a part-time counselor, and full-time core teachers, and so that's the direction with other details, of course, to follow if necessary. So at this time, I know that you received a lot more information in the early college high school packet that I provided for you because it had a lot more detail to give you some background, but I'd be glad to entertain any questions this time that you may have.
Before any questions are asked, I just wanna, and I already mentioned this in the email, but one of the reasons that we abbreviated the presentation, other than the written material you got, is because, as I told you in the email, the need for an MOU has been pushed about two or three months from now, maybe March around spring break. We got that word from the folks at ACC, so it's not as pressing, and there's still a lot of time for us to have more discussion about this program. I just asked Janie to come forward and talk about ECHS and what it means. This is a natural progression for us. I can tell you that Dr. Rhodes, not only president of ACC, but he's also the director of the Texas Community Colleges Association this year, he's the president, was very intrigued by Quad C. He's not seen a program like Quad C. He's seen different hybrids of academies and whatnot, and as Janie said, early college high school programs on college campuses, but he was very intrigued by Quad C. And the folks at ACC felt like we might have a halfway decent chance of getting an application, even though we don't have a college in our, in our district, and we are not a tax entity because of our experience with Quad C over two years. So again, this is just an overview to give you an idea of what ECHS looks like. It all could be a moot point if we find out in January that we are not accepted, and then we'd have another year to regroup and, and apply. But this is in the event that we are accepted, and then we would have to come forth with some more information, have some more dialogue, and talk to you about an MOU somewhere down the line in two to three months. And as Janie said, if you have any questions, we'd be more than glad to answer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janie. Appreciate it.
Any other presentations?
Next, we'd like to move to the communications, community services report. Donald Williams?
I think the only thing that we have to really discuss and talk about tonight, it's really no formal presentation, it's just giving you guys information on where we're at with our strategic planning.
Okay.
Update. You have the information. We're mid-year. We'll be coming back to you in May, early part of June, with a complete update on how the entire year has gone. But I've given you the information, you have the update, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, or if any of the campus administrators are here, if you have any specific questions of them regarding strategic planning.
Anybody have any questions? Great. Thank you, Donald. We'll move to consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, we're gonna pull item E. Would any board member like to pull any additional items? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve with the exception of item E.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Item A through G with the exception of E. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we will head to our action items. Mr. Williams, consider approval of Bastrop County Elections Administrator Contract.
Basically, this is something we do every year. You have a copy of the contract. It's extremely similar to what I present to you each year. The last two pages of the contract speaks to the cost. You have the costs based on if we were going to go into a joint agreement with our partners, and you also have the cost based on if we were going to do it all by ourselves. The election is on May 10th. Applications will be available the first part of the year. You will be able to pick those up through my office down at the county. You'll also be able to download those online as well. But this is a contract, you have it every year, and again, I'll entertain any questions if you have them.
We need to do this in three different?
Correct. That was the, that's the contract. Then we'll move from there to the joint agreement, and then we'll actually call the election. That's correct.
Got it. Entertained a motion for item 4A.
I recommend that the board approve the Bastrop County Elections Administrator Contract as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Bastrop County Elections Administrator Contract as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll go to item B.
Yes, sir, and that's just the joint agreement with the city of Bastrop. If it calls for us to be able to enter into this joint agreement, we already have this set and done and taken care of, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
If no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Agreement of Conduct, Joint Election Between the City of Bastrop, Bastrop ISD, and the Bastrop County Water Control and Improvement District Number Two. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
Seeking the board's approval to move forward in calling the election. Again, the election will be on May 10th. The two places that will be up will be place three and also place four. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them. If not, we'll look for approval to be able to move forward.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Calling of Board Trustees Election on May 10th, 2014, for place three and place four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Donald. Now we are going to turn it over to Barry Edwards, Camille Smith, or Camille Smith? And she will, Barry Edwards.
I got it.
I got this.
If you will examine your board book, please, gentlemen, we're bringing you two minor revisions to our Student Code of Conduct. We always look at the Student Code of Conduct as a working document, and we have discovered a couple of needs that we feel like are necessary in order to implement our techniques in behavior management and classroom management as we see fit and appropriate and best for our kiddos. So one of them has to do with adding a couple of strategies to our discipline techniques, which have to do with a gateway and/or a boot camp preview day, and that simply involves some time spent out at either one of those facilities, that parents would take their kids out to those facilities as a preview, and that serves as a deterrent, we hope. So that's part of our discipline management technique. The other item has to do with, for the purposes of defining DAEP, we want to, because of the grade level configurations, that sixth, seventh, and eighth grader often lump together, for those purposes, we'd like to define secondary for DAEP placement as beginning with grade six.
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the revisions to the Student Code of Conduct as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revisions to the Student Code of Conduct as presented.
Thank you.
Is there any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll turn it over to item E. Superintendent Murray.
Thank you, Mr. President. On E, we would simply ask the board approve the addition of a, another pay grade, which would be references A-11, to allow for a new title, Deputy Superintendent, because we have recently promoted one of our Assistant Superintendents, Mr. Barry Edwards, from Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources to Deputy Superintendent for Administrative Services, and we need to have a appropriate pay grade for that new titling and his new responsibilities. And then on the second one, and we'd ask for two different motions and votes, would be the board's approval of Deputy Superintendent's pay increase in pay grade 11 after it's approved to be commensurate with his duties and responsibilities.
Any questions for Steve? If, we're gonna have to take these one at a time. So, if there's no questions for Steve, I'll entertain a motion on action item 4E. That's consider approval of an additional pay grade, A-11, to the BISD Administrative Professional Salary Range for the 2013, 2014 school year.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider approval for an additional pay grade, A-11, to the BISD Administrative Professional Salary Range for the 2013, 2014 school year. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this. I've got some concerns with this change. I have never opposed the superintendent's selection of individuals for positions within the school district, and I'm not about ready to start tonight, okay? But this is a structural change to the organization's structure. And we're a small school district, a middle-sized school district with less than 10,000 students, and this appears to be a position that would more typically be associated with larger school districts. So that said, I don't, I don't think we're in the position where this is an appropriate position for this particular school size. Secondly, I think in approving this, there's going to be some unintended long-term consequences associated with having made this change in terms of the structure of the organization here in Bastrop, in the school district, okay? So for that reason, I'm not in favor of making this organizational structure change, okay? I'm not opposed to the individual that's been elected to it, and I'll support that position, but I'm opposed to the organizational structure aspect of this, for those reasons.
Any further discussion? I'll tell you why I support it in my discussion. I support it because we've, we've challenged Superintendent Murray to come up with a succession plan, and that doesn't mean that there's any timeline on when anybody would be retiring or anything like that, so, so don't jump to conclusions on that. But when we, we ask him to have a succession plan, and he comes up with something, I admire that, and I've, I've actually discussed this. It's, it's not all my, my vote, but I believe we do need a deputy superintendent. We've got a lot of things going. We've got two, two high schools. Things are growing, so that's the discussion part in which I support it. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote. All, all those in favor to consider approval for additional pay grade, A-11, to the BISD Administrative Professional Salary Ranges for 2013 and 14 school year, raise your right Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we will go to consider approval of Deputy Superintendent Pay Increase to Pay Grade Steve, that's a word that you pronounce very well, but I-
Commensurate.
Commensurate, there you go. With duties and responsibilities. Is there any discussion on this? If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Deputy Superintendent Pay Increase to Pay Grade 11, commensurate with duties and responsibilities. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Barry Edwards. Very, very well deserved. Okay, we're gonna go to information items. The district calendar's information only, enrollment's information only. We do, Nancy does a board training to date hours, and it looks like, I guess I'll request that maybe you send Mr. Peterson his hours and how many he lacks. I know he's got till February to get that done. All the other trustees have met. There are obligations that's required by the state, so I congratulate you all on that. Other than that, before we adjourn, I just wanted to say, I, I hope that the administration is working next week, next week, right? That was, it's a joke. I just wanted to say, I, I, I well-deserved a couple of weeks off for not only our administrators, but all of our faculty and staff. I don't know how much of Henry's staff will be off. I'm sure they get a full two weeks, Henry?
No.
No? I didn't, I didn't think so, but I do know it's a well-deserved time off. Relax a little bit, enjoy, probably eat a little bit too much, and I hope Santa comes and visits everybody. Thank you for coming again. I want everybody to have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January.
Thank you.
Most regards. From the county.